The City of Brownsville, pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 5, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Would everyone please stand for the Colt of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the act of Texas, one nation under God, indivisible.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And Lord, we thank you for this season where we celebrate the birth of your son here on earth. And Lord, in the spirit of that season, help each of us to do our part to bring peace. Help each of us to express our views and ideas in a loving manner. And Lord, we pray that for our leaders, from Washington to Austin to Brownsville. And Lord, for here tonight, we ask you to bless our mayor, commissioners, and every person who is presenting, to share ideas that are the best for the city. And lead and guide each of us to grow in unity, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Mayor's activity update?
I have no report yet.
Commissioners' activity update?
No.
Just to remind folks that the Santa is coming to the next Sequovia on December the 15th. So please check out the city website, Sequovia website, and be ready to get on your bicycle or take a walk and visit with Santa.
There's my man.
Anyone else?
Okay, well, we're gonna wait for Santa, okay?
Next, we have the proclamations. St. Joseph Academy District champs, if you would please come to the front.
Just in time, guys.
Nice entrance.
Stand up here. Commissioner Sessata will read the proclamation.
Well, on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, we want to commend St. Joseph Academy, a proclamation of the city commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing and honoring St. Joseph Academy's district champions. Whereas St. Joseph Academy was first established in 1865 by the oblates of Mary Immaculate, and in 1906 was led by the Marist Brothers, St. Joseph Academy is a Roman Catholic college prep school serving seventh grade through 12th grade students. Whereas for the past 150 years, St. Joseph Academy has been entrusted to educate students in our community through the Marist tradition of serving others with a preference for the poor. St. Joseph Academy offers a curriculum of rigorous college preparatory courses featuring the only space technology south of Houston, Texas. Whereas St. Joseph Academy is a member of Division 1, District 2 schools in Texas Association of Private and Parochial Schools, TAPS, which serves to organize, stimulate, encourage, and promote the academic, athletic, and fine arts program in an effort to foster a spirit of fair play, good fellowship, true sportsmanship, and wholesome competition for both boys and girls. Whereas on Friday, November 10, 2017, St. Joseph Academy's Bloodhounds faced off against Antonian Prep Apaches in San Antonio, Texas, in the TAPS Division 1, District 2 championship football game. The Bloodhounds defeated the Apaches 55 to 31, earning the TAPS Division 1, District 2 championship trophy. And whereas St. Joseph Academy's championship win is demonstration of the student-athlete's faith and determination to perform their best and inspire their fellow students. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue and the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor St. Joseph Academy's for their district champion win, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the student-athletes dedicated to excellence in athletic and academic endeavors. Done this on this fifth day of November, 2017. Signed, the mayor and the honorable commission of Brownsville. Congratulations.
Okay, who's gonna tell us a little?
Speech.
Little speech here. All right, Coach? Okay.
We're already breaking things. Sorry about that. Mayor, commissioners, thank you, on behalf of St. Joseph Academy, for this proclamation. It's been 37 years for St. Joe since we've won a district championship, and it's been, it's definitely been a great ride. We didn't really start the season the way we thought it was gonna end up. We were 1-3 after the first month of play. And after that, we won a lot of games, leading us to that final game against Antonian. And sometimes, a lot of people look at St. Joe, sometimes we're a small school, we kinda get kind of pushed over to the side as far as the talk in the big scheme of things in football. But we play schools with three times our population sometimes, and they're real tough to defeat. So I'm really proud of the boys. We have a lot of, a lot of our guys that are, we're a small school, so they play every sport. We have five games happening right now at the school, and practices for another eight sports. So all of our boys that are in other sports unfortunately could not make it here today, but I wanted to thank you all so much, as always, for everything you do, and for the proclamation. Also, it was just a great year for the City of Brownsville. SBISD also had some really great teams also make the playoffs and go far into the playoffs. And so, just as a citizen of Brownsville, very happy to see that Brownsville's back on the map for football. We had a little dry spell there for a while.
Yeah. I do wanna congratulate the guys for the determination. I do follow your sport. I had one of my sons, I think, played for six years and won one game, so, at St. Joe. So, and he's probably gonna hate me for saying that, but anyway, guys, great effort, great determination. You know, what you learn on that, from this coach and all your teachers at St. Joe, take it on to real life, because that's what it takes, a lot of determination, a lot of grit, but never sell yourself short. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Coach. Good job.
Next proclamation we have is Anahí de la Garza.
We want to congratulate Anahí for your accomplishments with the proclamation. A proclamation of the City of Brownsville, recognizing and honoring Anahí de la Garza. Whereas Anahí de la Garza was born in Brownsville, Texas, on February 12, 2000, to José Eduardo de la Garza and Erica Denise Treviño. Anahí is sister to Andrés Sebastián, Eduardo Rafael, and Carolina Valerio. Whereas Anahí de la Garza is currently enrolled in Hannah Early College High School in Brownsville, Texas, and is a member of the graduating class of 2018. Anahí maintains a 3.2 grade point average and actively participates in the science, technology, architecture, and medical profession college prep program. Anahí plans to pursue a career in law to eventually serve as a district attorney. Whereas Anahí de la Garza first entered a pageant in 2015, and has since gone on to earn the titles of Miss Southern Elegance, Miss Brownsville Galaxy Teen, and currently represents Brownsville, Texas, as Miss Tropics of Texas Teen USA. Whereas, Miss Tropics of Texas Teen USA, Anahí de la Garza competed in the 2018 Miss Texas Teen USA pageant on November 26, 2017. And whereas, Anahí de la Garza has exemplified true beauty through service to her community by providing assistance during Hurricane Harvey relief efforts, and by serving as ambassador for Tierras of Hope. Additionally, Anahí has served as a volunteer for Fashion for a Cure and the Rio Grande Valley Food Bank. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and honor Anahí de la Garza, and further call upon the residents of Brownsville to celebrate the accomplishments of our youth who inspired to serve our community. Done on this, the fifth day of December, 2017. Congratulations, Anahí.
Congratulations. Do you wanna say a few words?
Well, with this title, it's given me a great honor to represent my community of Brownsville. We are kind of small, but we are growing, and fortunate enough to have gone to Miss Texas Teen USA and talked to girls about my wonderful city, and grown and made tons of friends, and now they're coming to visit Brownsville hopefully soon. And thank you all so much for this proclamation.
Thank you for what you do.
Congratulations.
Next, we have presentations, Texas historical landmark markers.
Get that one.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city commissioners. I'm very glad to be here to introduce you to an awesome event that we are going to have, an event that we are going to have this Friday at 10 o'clock. It is the unveiling of three historical, recorded Texas historical landmarks. We will start at Ford Brown at 10 o'clock, and we will continue and end the event on the Stillman House. The event is possible thanks to a VCIC grant that we received the last year. And the main goals of the event is to pay a tribute to the oldest, or some of the oldest historic brick buildings that we have here in Brownsville. We are going to unveil two historical markers at the post-hospital building, and also the commissary and guardhouse, and ending into the Stillman House now that it's, the PHA are celebrating their 17th anniversary. Finally, what we are trying to do with the event are two also very important goals. One is the community outreach by having the markers, not only in English but in Spanish, and the guided tour as well would be done with, I mean with two people that will explain, Mr. Tony Up and his wife will do also the guided tour in English and Spanish respectively. Finally, the, one of the main goals also that we cover with this event is to support to the downtown business owners, and that's the reason why the event ends in the Stillman House. So what we do is to complement these medallion and plaques that are on the buildings with these large subject markers that are quite big and probably the best marker that you can find here in the state of Texas with their post. This is the J.G. Canales marker, and it's the biggest one. So we will start the, we will start here. The event, we will move into the commissary and guardhouse, and we will return through Main Street up to International Boulevard until we will, until we get to the other marker located at the Stillman House. So this is the, you can see here, the total guided tour that we will do, and Mr. Tony Up and his wife will explain to us some tips also about the buildings. So that's, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda items, A through U.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearings. Public hearing number six, public hearing on first reading on ordinance number 2017-1633, annexing territory to the City of Brownsville and extending the boundary limits and adopting a service plan.
Good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor, city commissioners. This is a voluntary petition for annexation. And just to give a quick introduction, Chapter 43 of the Texas Local Government Code basically lays out the requirements that we need to follow as a city whenever we want to proceed with an annexation that is being petitioned. Mr. Fidencio and Mrs. Sanjuana Barron have filed the, actually the petition, or the voluntary petition to annex one parcel of land. They have complied with submitting the required petition, the witness affidavit, as well as the meets and bounds describing the parcel, which are requirements for the application. And so this is the, the location of the parcel. It's a 2.5 acre tract. You can recognize here in the corner, this is Rivera High School. The property is fronting Ruben M. Torres, and then on the right-hand side, we have Indiana Road, right here, and Vermillion, on the left-hand side. So as part of the requirements for annexation, we are responsible for sending out written notices to all, you know, the property owners that are gonna be included in the annexation, as well as the entities that have any, any sort of jurisdiction for that property. We're also required to post a notice of the public hearings, which is, this will be the first public hearing, on the city's website, as well as the, a newspaper, in this case, the Brownsville Herald. We need to do the notices at least 10 days before the public hearing. As far as public hearings, we're required to conduct two public hearings, to give all persons the opportunity to be heard and comment. The hearings must be conducted at least 20 days before the institution of the proceedings, and the annexation has to be completed within 90 days from the date of the city commission institutes the annexation proceedings. A very important requirement is the service plan. We are required to prepare a service plan that provides, for the extension of the full municipal services to the area. We have about four and a half years to do that. And among the services that need to be included in this service plan, and is one of the exhibits in your pocket, we need to offer police protection, fire protection, emergency medical services, solid waste collection, and other, and other services as well. And just as a recap of the annexation steps that have already happened, we have mailed out letters to the landowners and entities, in this case, it's only one landowner, who's the one that is filing the petition. We mailed out all the entities, including PUB, I mean the school district, the drainage district number one, among others. We sent this certified mail on November 3, and so that basically comply with the requirement that it needs to be sent out 30 days prior to the first public hearing. We also did the advertisement in the newspaper, and it was advertised on November 25 for the first public hearing, as well as December 2 for the second public hearing, which is gonna happen next Tuesday, at the next city commission. So the first public hearing is happening tonight. You don't need to take any action, it's just a public hearing. And then the second public hearing will happen on December 12, which is next Tuesday. Again, it won't, it's just a public hearing, no action will be required from you, and then we'll place the item under consent, as a consent item in January, whenever the first meeting is scheduled. So again, this is a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here on this issue? No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion, is there a motion to approve?
We don't take action?
No, no.
Oh, you don't think, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, you have the, I've noticed we, our next session is on the 12th, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item, public comment period. At this time, we have Mr. Edwin Jones.
I just wanna bring to your attention a situation that has been worried to us and affecting our business since almost three years ago, since we built a plaza. Back on 2012, December 12, we were requested to switch from rezoning process, and it was approved back on January 10 of 2013. After presenting drawings and everything to the planning and zoning department, we were approved. And since January 12, 2013, after the commissioners were approved, we were to be working on a 3C zoning process. Due to affecting some personal issues, we were not able to start to presenting our projects until 2014. Building permits were issued November 2014, sorry. And then on January 2015, we were shut down because there was an overlay which has been affecting our property and some other properties around us. Since then, apparently it was because there was a lawsuit, because nobody knew about this overlay when we were approved, neither of, neither of us. Then we start working, there was an amendment issued to us, and we gave an issue of like nine possible businesses out of the list of comes through the 3C process that, and the ordinance is approved. Since then, we have been kinda asking for permission of what kind of tenants we have been renting to our customers.
One minute.
And right now, after several approaches to several departments with no results, I'm bringing this to your attention, and that's the reason I have this booklet, so you can take a look of, to our situation. And that's the reason I wanna bring it to your attention, that you can help us.
Okay. Now, do those books, are they, give us an explanation of what the situation is?
Yes, I'm just, I wanna bring it to your attention, if you can help us to bring it out, and help us, because right now, I'm trying to resound from 3C to a 4C, because I have a customer who asked for an equity loan to set up with us, and right now, with the overlay situation, I'm not able to move on forward to, to rezoning process.
Well, thank, thank you for being here. We'll get a chance, I hadn't, didn't understand all the situation, but I think we'll get a chance to study it.
I mean, several people knows about it, okay?
Okay.
So we're gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or?
I haven't, all I, you know, all I've read was something that was brought to me my attention today, so I haven't had a chance to take a look at it. That's the only thing, I just, I like to kinda take a look at it. I don't, I can't tell you.
Well, he probably needs to have that put on the agenda to be resolved, I would think. But, and I, my understanding is, if something comes up like this at a public comment, that we don't have to take action on it, but we can put it on, as an agenda item.
I, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, I think that's accurate, but like I said, the only thing is, I, you know, me, I like to kinda read what I have, you know, so before, I mean, if, if you would just allow me that time, then if, if we have time to do that, then we'll do accordingly. But thank you so much.
At least if somebody can come back to us and let us know what's going on.
Yeah, no, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everybody.
Next public comment we have is Mr. Juan Treviño.
One of the really exciting things about that podium is that it's accessible to anybody that wants to come up here and speak.
Okay. Name and address, right? All right, I'm Juan Treviño, and 104 Grand Rapids Lane. So I attended the November 29 Town Hall regarding the Jefferson Davis Monument, and noticed a number of speakers in some form arguing that we should not remove it because of its historical context. Anyone who has lived in Brownsville for a while has most likely seen the plaques around town. For those who don't know, those are official Texas history markers, established by the Texas Historical Commission, and we have quite a few. This information is available for viewing on the historical markers page at brownsville.org and on the Texas Historical site's Atlas website. The Jefferson Davis Monument is not among them. The markers, one of which is located at the Brownsville Convention and Tours Bureau, and the other at Alice Wilson Memorial Park, explain how Brownsville was the center of activity during the Civil War, but show no support toward the causes of the North or the South. However, the Davis Monument was created to showcase an individual, Jefferson Davis, president of the Confederate States of America and unrepentant white supremacist who fought for slavery. It is revisionist propaganda, created by the Daughters of the Confederacy in an attempt to rewrite the narrative of the South and present an immoral individual in a positive light. Davis's beliefs that Africans were to be seen as, quote, "inferior" and, another quote, "fitted expressly for servitude" have no place in a society where we believe in liberty and justice for all. If there's anything we can learn from the historical context of this monument, the person it honors, and the discussions we've had because of it, it's that we should never treat other people as property because of their race or skin tone, or for any reason at all. We should not view or present Jefferson Davis as a hero. We have no reason to memorialize a white supremacist who believed in and fought for slavery. By removing the Jefferson Davis Monument from Washington Park and keeping it out of any public area, we can show other cities that the officials and people of Brownsville, Texas, recognize the mistakes of previous generations and hope to never repeat them.
One minute.
We cannot erase the negative parts of our history, but we can learn from them, and should always attempt to progress past them.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Michelle Serano.
Good evening, commissioners, and mayor, and all other administrative professionals here today. I want the commission to hear me out about just a couple things that have to do with the Jefferson Davis Rock. A lot of it has to do with history and colonial frameworks. What I want you guys to consider is that colonial frameworks of thinking have shaped Brownsville and undermined equitable treatment of people of color here. From literacy to property rights, our history in Brownsville is littered with actions taken by dominant powers to paint narratives which lionize oppressive and violent land grabbers, while ignoring historical lessons about localized lynching and terrorism of the area's populations. These actions are responsible for the marginalization of voices even today, in every vote that does not get cast, and in every person that is told to go back to Mexico. That way, the way that we tell our history, it really matters to our social well-being. I'm all for history, but I only seek that we teach it fairly here in Brownsville. And I expect that publicly funded institutions like museums, or anybody who's funding any type of historical monument, do it fairly and equitably. I really ask that we put this rock in a museum where history can be communicated effectively, and where our populations can learn the truth from both perspectives, not just the dominant colonial frameworks, but the other side of the coin, which we never hear about. Lastly, I would like to comment about the meeting that happened. Juan referred to it, I'll refer to something that happened to, happened there.
One minute.
That was concerning. Aside from small comments that were made by committee board chairman De Los Santos for not pushing so hard with our agenda, there was a serious item of concern to note with youth advisory board member and known alt-right activist, José Antonio Escobedo, a sitting committee member for the Rock, seemingly so. Specifically, Escobedo's body language and smiling to commenter Christopher Gracia during the Town Hall was favorable, up to Escobedo smiling as the words "go back to Mexico" were uttered by Gracia. These actions are a clear sign of hostility and partiality to the issue at hand, which is cause for serious concern. I have already made formal complaint to city management to have Escobedo removed as the representation from the city, and I am now asking you guys today for the same.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Next, we have items for individual consideration. Action item number eight, consideration and action to request authorization to approve advertising and promotion services under current term contract for the Brownsville South Padraí International Airport with Millard Hollander Advertising Design Marketing.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a contract, an existing term contract that was extended last year with Millard Hollander for marketing efforts at the airport. We've budgeted for that, we just never got the budget approved. Even though the budget, the city's budget, and therefore my budget's been approved by the Commission, we need to approve the line item because it does exceed $35,000 limit. The budget this year is $175,000. In addition to that, what we want to do is also have approved no more than a 50%, a 15% increase for next year, although we don't expect it to go really move at all, but because of course I have to have city management approve the budget beforehand. So I'd like to approve this year's budget as well as next year's budget.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
This is an extension of a contract that has been in existence since 2008?
That's correct. It's a five-year, I believe the original contract was a five-year contract with three one-year extensions, or I don't remember the extension terms.
Okay, so you're asking us to extend that same contract?
No, the contract's been extended. What I'm asking for is to actually fund the contract, which was budgeted for.
Has, has this gone out for bidding?
It did in the, in the original contract. We went out for RFQs. The budget is based on what the city and the airport believe is a feasible amount for marketing effort.
So for the last 10 years, it has not, nobody else has had a shot at that contract, basically?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. It was a five-year contract with three?
No, I think it was two, three-year extensions or something, I forget what it was.
All right.
But the, the contract does expire at the end of the next one, 2019.
2019?
Correct.
And so far, as best as I can tell, it's been a pretty effective and well-run marketing campaign.
It has. Last year, we, we put together a marketing, strategic marketing plan, and that's been going pretty smoothly. And they, they do everything from the pins that we order, to the billboards, to the website.
My only point is that at some point, the public or other advertisers or companies like this should be allowed to be participating and getting a shot at that. That's where I'm going with it.
Right, it's at the conclusion of their contract, that's when we would do it.
Okay. Is this an action item? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to per.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Item number nine?
Action item number nine, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for fiscal year ended in September 30th, 2017.
Good evening, Arnold Mayor, City Commissioners. In your packet, electronic version of the financial statements and cash investment report was included with your packet. Right now, I'm going to go over a presentation that would summarize that information. We have the unofficial unaudited financial statements for a year ending September 30th. These are topics that will be covered. We have some financial highlights. The tax levies are doing a little bit better than last year by two tenths of a percent. Base receipts through August for fiscal year, for this fiscal year, Veterans Bridge revenues have increased 9.6% for the same period of last year, or 46% of our budget projections. POB cash transfer to the city increased compared to last fiscal year's numbers by $925,000 and $2.1 million above adopted budget. Utility expenses for expenditures are 4% lower for the same period of last year. This is a plus, because anytime we have a reduction, the utility is a greater transfer from POB. Landfield tipping fees have increased by $92,000 compared to last year. One of the items of caution here is the sales taxes. Compared to last year, we're down 1.63%, 3.55% below budget projections that we had initially when we amended the budget, we, we're above the budget, amended budget by 1.43%. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund reflects a $57,000 decrease from last year, not a significant decrease. Unemployment rate for 2016 increased, this is on a calendar from, from 2015, from 7% to 7.8% through the month of, for the month of September, we have an unemployment rate of 6.6%. Hotel motel taxes receipts are 12% or $171,000 lower than the same period of fiscal year 2016. One of the mitigating factors on here is during Hurricane Harvey, there was a, governor did suspend the collections of hotel motel tax that attributed to about $50,000. There's also about $30,000 in arrears that has the spending collections through September, and the rest is just attributed to just a decrease in the hotel receipts. Building permit values, I put it as a item of concern, is a decrease 7.05% from last year. The activity is still healthy, but it does have a decrease in the actual property values, and I'll go over a little bit more right now. Going back to the general fund again, just went over it, actuals year-to-date decreased $450,000, 1.6%. Compared to the original budget, it decreased about $1 million, 3.55%. And to the amended budget that we went ahead through the budget process amended it, it increased $388,000, 1.43%. This is a bar graph of the sales tax revenues from fiscal year 2007 through actuals 2017. Veteran Bridge cash transfer from the county, actuals to date, this is through August, we have not gotten September's information yet. Usually they take a while because of year-end audit, and then they give us the number, but increase of $207,000 compared to last year. Budget, $745,000 more than projected budget. This is Veterans Bridge cash transfer from the county. Through 2017, you'll see that the actuals through August exceed, are about 9% right now. Again, we're still pending September's number, it's usually about 200, 225,000 more. This is Veterans Bridge crossing analysis, this is dollar values of the activity from fiscal year 2014 to 2017, you'll see a steady increase on there. This paragraph, similar progress is broken down by the different categories, which is auto, motorcycles, commercial, and miscellaneous, you see a trend going from fiscal year 2014 to 2017 increase. This is just a summary of revenues of expenditures, total budgets for the, for the revenue side, you show actuals of $107,000 compared to $105,000. On the expenditure side, you have a total budget of $111,000, we only spent $107,000. Building permits, this is a building permits graph, since 2012 to current 2017, the values of the property have stayed within about $150, $150 million steady amount. This is a breakdown on the individual parking permits, broken down by the different presidential and commercial. Again, the activity's still active, number of permits are around the, about 3,000 permits active. The difference in here was the permit values, the values were actually a little bit lower than previous year.
Mr. Greenell, on the new commercial, how can two permits be 22 million, or how do you, how does that?
Well, that's, that's, there were 54 permits in the, in the year 2016, and year 2017, there's a different 56 permits done, they're not the same permits. There's activity for one year and activity for the other.
So the two, it's two permits more this year, right? But it's then over 20 million less in the, in the amount brought in?
That was, that was because each of the permits have a different value for commercial.
Depending on the size of the building or something like that?
Correct.
Okay.
That was, that was my concern, the 17% lower than last year. Are other cities having that same issue? Was it something specifically that we did where we're not seeing valuable movement within our city?
Well, like, we don't carry that information from other cities pertaining to permits is something we could look at, but as far as the activity, the, the number of permits, again, there's, it's, we're active, it's just the values of those permits from one year to another differ in valuations.
Thank you.
Yes. This is a line graph of the POB cash transfers from fiscal year 2008 to 2017, as for 2014 to 2017, you see a steady increase on there. On utilities, you have a pretty steady utility consumption, which is good. This is unemployment rates from 2004, this is calendar year 2004 to calendar year 2016. For 2017, this is a nine-month average, nine-month average of about 7.8%. As you'll note that in the footnote, the unemployment rate for September was, September by itself was seven, excuse me, 6.6%, which is good. This is a summary of the balances between fiscal year 2016 and 2017. You see total assets, their combined of cash investments, receivables, inventories, and so forth, so much, $43,83,000. You have liabilities of $13.9 million. Fund balances, total combined fund balance is of 29.147%, excuse me, 47, $29,147,000. Total liability fund balance, $43,83,000. This is a schedule of the unassigned fund balance, this is if all the, if we start off with your beginning fund balance, if you had your budget, if we spent all the budgets, if we spent, excuse me, all the revenues, we recognized all the revenues, we spent all the budgets, we would have an estimated fund balance at year-end at $16,370,000. Now, we did a lot better than this, and we, which we usually do during our budget comparisons. This is a breakdown of the different fund balances on here. The one to focus on is on the second to the right column is the unassigned fund balance, which has a fund balance of $20,966,000. This is the general fund statement of revenue, revenue expenditure, change in fund balance. I'll show you a bar graph on this one, but just to go over real quick, on, on here, you have your, your budget and your actuals. As you can see, most of these are about 100%, if not they'll get there. On the non-property taxes, they're still having some revenues that are still coming in, their quarterly payments, we expect that to be pretty much close to 100%. Franchise fees, same thing, we exceed 100% on there. Intergovernmental funds, those are grant funds that are recognizing their slightly decrease compared to last year, not much. Fines of forfeiture, that is one that, that did decrease a little bit from last year. All the other ones are, we're pretty much meeting or exceeding budgets, or will be due by the end of the year. Total revenues, $105,000. This is the bar graph I was talking about, that you'll have the orange, the latest amended budget and your actuals, different bar graphs on the different respective revenues. This is a similar one, but what we did on this one, we added 2016 actuals, so you can see the decrease and increase between each of the revenue categories. Then we go to the expenditures, again, this is, these expenditures are by function, against on the total revenues, excuse me, total expenditures, 900, excuse me, 99, 99,622,000. We have revenues over expense, over expenditures of $5.8 million. Then you have your transfers in, your transfers out. When you, when you net that out, there's a decrease of $73,395,000. You had a beginning fund balance of $29.2 million, you're ending, you're ending up with unassigned fund balance of $209,66,000. This is a similar graph as revenues, where you have your fiscal, you added at fiscal year 2016 to kind of indicate your revenue, excuse me, your expenditures difference between 2016 and 2017, and of course your budget 2017, budget of 2017. This is a history unassigned fund balance, if you indicate there, since fiscal year 2014, you see the unassigned fund balance, which is, that's the, that steadily increase. We're projected to have an ending fund balance of 19.5%, balance, this is of course a lot better than we're expecting.
What was it recommended?
15 to 18% is recommended, right now we're exceeding that, which is, which is, looks favorable, especially when you got the issued debt. Same information, just in Excel numbers information. This schedule, this next to schedule is the, the different fund balances, you have the assigned fund balances, these are all the assigned fund balances on there, and the activity on those, you have your assigned, you're committed, you're restricted, and those are the amounts that are, that are separated from our unassigned fund balance that need to be tracked separately. You have your special revenue funds, first you have your, first one is convention tourism fund, you have your revenues, less transfers, transfers in, less transfers out, you have revenues under expenditures of $148,000, you have beginning fund balance of $1,063,000, lease of balance of $914,000. Community development is a grant fund, revenues coming in, regular expenses going out, balances out. Landfill fund, you had a plus on the revenues of $250,000, add ending fund balance, $1.9, $1.9 million. Debt service, you have non-bonded and your bonded on the right-hand side, this is about take care of all our debt service payments, total debt service revenues come from rental taxes and interest earned of $29.3 million. Then you have your expenditures, your debt service, $30,000, $30,653. You had a decrease, we have expenditures over revenues of $583,000. We had a beginning fund balance on there, and this was, it was programmed of about $1.5 million. It brings your ending fund balance of $916,000 at year-end. Enterprise funds, you got the airport fund, airport fund, you have your revenues and expenditures, you have in the positive $103,000. Bridge fund, you have in the positive $387,000. Positive balance at year-end is $2.7 million. Motor vehicle parking system, again, you have a positive $93,000. Brownsville Gulf Center Fund, you have a positive $2,000, which includes the transfers in, net position of $1,977,000. This is a public transit, total price, public transit operates, total expenditures about Of that, it's funded by general fund transfer of 29% or $1.5 million, charges for services of 19% of about a million dollars. There's rents associated with that, $513,000, 10%. Miscellaneous revenue of $133,000. FTA contributes to the operations of the terminal, of the bus, transit, excuse me, bus, of an amount of $1.2 million, 24%. There's other contributions on there, and the state also contributes to the operation. State of Texas in the amount of $512,000, or 10%. This is for operating. Next one is capital. We get capital grants in order to operate some of the capital needs of the metro connect, metro department. Capital planning, of course, we issued COs, 14%. FTA covers most, some of these capital requirements of 31%, $903,000. Charges for service, $124,000. General fund kicked in for those, 16% of $462,000. And the state also contributed for Metro Connect, $509,000, or 18%. This is numbers associated with the schedules I just went over. Medical insurance plans, September 30th, medical insurance plans, September 30th, where expenditures exceeded our revenues at September 30th. This is an item that we, we are addressing this fiscal year, but as of September 30th, there was a, that net loss on that one of about $59,000. We're addressing that in fiscal year 2018 by increasing the city contributions and increasing the employee contributions. Last, we have the investment report, you have investments composed of demand, just, just go over to the, this pie graph, investment portfolio. We invest in investment pools of 65%, certificate deposits 8.8%, interest-bearing accounts of 23.5%, and obligation governments of 2.49%. That concludes the presentations, do you have any questions?
Very good, Lupin, thank you. This is an action item.
Motion to acknowledge.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lupin. Item number 10?
Action item number 10, consideration and action to adopt budget amendment, resolution number 2017-069, to amend the general fund's fiscal year 2018 budget to provide $150,000 in funding to hire an executive headhunter firm for the recruitment of a city manager.
Arnold, we are members of the City Commission, item we recommend to be approved?
So the search committee is looking at a variety of choices for headhunters, and we would like to move as expeditiously as possible to be able to hire one by the first of the year. For this reason, we are bringing this item to you, and it is not a guarantee that we would spend that, but we may spend less, but it gives us room to act instead of having to wait another month for more commission meetings.
Can you for the record, tell us who's on your committee?
Commissioner Moonghia, myself, Commissioner Longoria, John Cowan, Nerith Galonsky, Nick Sarafi, Patricio Sampaio, Michael Lemus, John Wood. I'm forgetting some.
Laura?
Laura?
Anytime.
Laura from HR. I think there's one more.
Furia?
And Felicia Furia. I'm sorry, Felicia. Felicia Furia, representing BCIC.
That encompasses all the GBIK and...
GBIK, PUB, BCIC, the chamber, the port. Yes.
And did they recommend, is this something...
They are, we are unanimous in making this recommendation.
I think it's a very valuable asset to go to a headhunter. That's exactly what we did on GBIK. And of course, it doesn't cost anywhere near as much as that. It's, I think it's like one-third of the salary, plus a small bonus, depending on who they come back with. So it is a very valuable asset to have the best qualified end person in the land, you know, better than just posting it in a small scope area. I mean, we might find somebody locally, we might find somebody that can do wonderful things for our city that's not, not here right now. So...
I agree with you, Commissioner. This is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Pete. Item number eleven.
Action item number eleven, consideration and action to approve the capital expenditures that will be financed by the sale of the combination tax and revenue certificate series 2018 and the public finance contractual obligation series 2018 on December 12, 2017.
I don't know, may I remember, so the city commission, we're gonna, we're gonna ask the city commission not to take action on this item, since this item was, has already been approved on November seventh, when we approved the financing, which is scheduled for December 12. It was a plan of finance that we, that the city commission approved. But there were some questions during that agenda item that I would like to address tonight.
Could I have the...
Thank you. And again, what's going to be issued, we're not asking tonight for you to approve the sale of the bonds and the COs, until next week on December the 12th. But we're looking at seventeen million five sixty-five for the CO, and five million one sixty for the public property finance contractual obligation series. We had some reimbursement resolutions that were approved by the city commission way back in, in May of 2017. And this resolutions, when they were approved, what the reimbursement resolution says is that it gives us the authority to spend money from the general fund with the understanding that any expenses that have been charged to the general fund, based on the reimbursement resolutions, the general fund can be reimbursed with the CO proceeds when the debt is issued. Why are we, why are we borrowing money? Well, this is just an example. For instance, if we were to use our reserves, because we're gonna be spending, let's say, twenty-two million seven twenty-five, and that's what we're gonna be borrowing for these capital projects and equipment, we would be under, obviously, with a fund, unassigned fund balance of twenty point nine million minus twenty-two billion. And that's the reason why we don't want to use any reserves, but whether we go and borrow, borrow money. And by borrowing money, obviously, that expense is carried over several years, and it gives us the opportunity to carry out some of the projects that we would, we would not be able to cover unless we borrow. These are the members of the city commission that who voted for, on May sixteenth, for the reimbursement resolutions. It was a yea vote from all members at that time. We had Deborah Portillo and John Yarial, who are no longer with us. The, what was in the reimbursement resolution way back in May, we asked the city commission to allow us to spend these dollars that are listed in this schedule, which totaled to fifteen million two sixty-five. We also had the reimbursement resolution for the, the public property finance contractual obligations. We had the same votes, and that was from resolution number twenty-seven, twenty seventeen, zero nineteen. And this is what was requested at the time, which is about five million dollars for much-needed vehicles and major equipment. The plan of finance that I spoke to you earlier was adopted by the city commission on November seventh, 2017, which allows the city to move forward and in getting ready to take all the necessary action to approve the debt, which is scheduled for next Tuesday, on December 12th. During this meeting of November seventh, we had four, four yays. Commissioner Bennies voted no, and we had two absent members, Commissioner-at-Large Dr. Gowan and Commissioner Ricardo Longoria. But the, the pass, it was approved, a plan of finance. Since then, we added the landfill from what we had earlier of two million dollars. So the total amount now is seventeen million two sixty-five. And I'll go over some of these projects as we move forward. Again, this is...
Pete, can I ask you a question there? On the last slide, the public works and engineering, ten percent, is that by ordinance? Or is that something you all designated?
It's been, it was recommended several, several years ago that we provide monies for sidewalks. And it's been like this since that particular year. I don't recall the year that this was approved by the city.
It's about eight years ago.
Several years ago.
It was a resolution passed to provide funding for every time there's a street done, so that there's a sidewalk that can also accompany it. But it's also used for matching funds whenever we go out for, let's say, we wanted to build more sidewalks than that ten percent would allow, we can find a grant and use that matching fund, use that as a matching fund to leverage and multiply that money.
So are there, I think there's a bike advisory committee, right? Or something like that? Aren't they entitled to a percentage of whenever there's a bond issued? Aren't they supposed to get a percentage? Does the beautification committee? There's something in the statute, or in the ordinance, rather, that says that two percent or five percent should go to those two advisory committees, which is the beautification and the bike advisory committee.
But not from this fund.
Okay, all right. So that's not part of this. But this is a bond that's gonna be done. So shouldn't there be a percentage of this bond going to those two committees?
I don't, I don't know.
It's up to the city commission to decide.
But I think it's in the statute.
And again, these monies that are here, the seventeen million, whatever is not used on those categories can be moved to another category.
Okay, well, could you, could we, could you check the two ordinances? It's the bike advisory and the beautification committee. I think those ordinances have some provision, providing that they're supposed to be awarded a percentage whenever there's a bond or a certificate of obligation. Now, I just want to confirm that, okay? So we'll know for the next approval meeting, okay?
We'll do.
Okay.
Again, this is the vehicles and heavy equipment that was authorized, which are on five million dollars. We are required to have a public notice on the certificates of obligation that we're gonna be issuing on December the 12th. And this is just what appear in the Bronzel Herald on November eleventh and November the eighteenth. And that's a requirement, a publication notice. Again, this is the seventeen million two sixty-five that we're gonna be issuing with the CO. And this is a breakdown of how, on a chart of the expenses. Again, any money that is not used in one category can actually be moved to another, other category as we move on. As far as streets, now, there's five million dollars. One of the questions that was asked on November the seventh is what streets are we going to be using some of these monies? The engineering department will be getting a certain amount, which is about three million from the five, from the five. And those are the streets that, that the engineering department will be working on during fiscal year 2018. Public Works was also, this are some of the streets that Public Works will be working on once they get their, their funding in place, which is altogether for about, so all the, all the streets totaling two million dollars.
Pete, can you, can you get us a list of that with the districts on them? Because I didn't see a single one in district two.
All of the districts are included. Obviously, not all the districts are getting the same. Some are getting less, some are getting more. But we can certainly furnish this to you by, I guess, by next, next Tuesday.
Because I'm only seeing one.
Okay.
So aren't the choice, in reference to that, isn't the choice of the street based on the street survey? And need that, that the streets came out on to prioritize? No? So remember, remember a couple of years ago when they did that survey to see the need as far as how, what the condition of all the streets were?
Yes.
I do understand that. I just think it's a quarter of the town, and, I mean, that's weird to not...
Yeah, Public Works...
Copy me on that, too, please.
Public Works is looking at the most needed repair that we need to work on. So they go throughout the whole city, and that's, that's what they come up with. But we can certainly furnish you that information to you. We are gonna need some monies for cell construction of the landfill. And of course, the intention is to develop the cell. The estimated cost is around two point two million. We're borrowing two, but we have another, additional monies in the landfill fund that will cover this. This is something that's needed because it's, obviously, it's inspected by the TCQ, TCEQ. And every year, we're fortunate that when the TCEQ comes around and inspects us, we pay, we pass with flying colors. Again, this is money that's also needed for the landfill sale. And there's more information here that we can certainly furnish to you. The library, it's another question that came up last November, November seventh. How are you spending this five million dollars for the central library? We have re-roofing, eight hundred and fifty thousand. The east side front addition and closing walkway, two million ninety-one thousand four hundred. The expansion and renovation of the children's area, one million two twenty-six one forty-seven. And then there's a contingency for AE testing, compliance reviews, et cetera, et cetera, of eight hundred and thirty-two thousand four fifty-three. And there's an explanation of what, the re-roofing, the east side, detailed information of what, how this money's gonna be spent. Parks improvements, obviously, right now, the parks needs quite a bit, especially the swimming pool at Sam's, that, that's definitely, she's got a, I asked Damaris for a record of what she, how she thinks she's gonna be spending this money. It's here, all, all prepared by, by Damaris. The police, they need some, on the police main station, chillers of eighty thousand and plumbing totaling four hundred thousand. The, the, this is the Tiger Grant. The Tiger Grant, obviously, we were awarded ten million dollars. It has not been executed. It's still, the money has not been drawn. But most of, or all of the money that is in the Tiger Grant is for transit system. At very, at one time, we had the component two, and the component two was for the causeway. And then, when that was denied, then we moved, we moved some of that money. Maybe we could reallocate some of that money for the airport. Since then, that doesn't go, didn't go through. My understanding is the text department, transportation is, then, since they, they removed, we removed the four million three hundred thousand that was originally allocated for part of the airport. They said, well, I tell you what, we'll go ahead and keep, you can keep the four million three, but spend it on transit. The good thing about this, that this particular, we'll carry it in eighty, twenty percent. Eighty percent federal and twenty percent local. And my understanding is that we need to replace some of these buses that are getting old, that eventually is gonna get old. But some of the money that went into the, from the Tiger Grant, it was for the maintenance facility there on Joe Kalunga, and got vehicles, transit vehicles, you've got bus, bus shelters, et cetera, et cetera. If you look at the whole picture, we're looking at nineteen million eight eighty-seven, that's, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be spent. The only thing that has not been allocated yet from the local funds, and I've got, I've got some footnotes at the very bottom of the, of this particular, and I'll go over them with you. And that's F, that's, there's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, one forty, one hundred and forty-one, that to be potentially funded by several agencies. And Norma Samore is gonna go out there and ask for some of these monies, which would be from Cameron County, UTRGV, the Lower River Grand Development Council, and BCIC. This has not been funded, and that's letter number F on, of there, of six hundred and sixty thousand one forty-one. And the other is the one million seventy-five thousand that we have not funded yet, for local share, to buy some of these transit vehicles. The good, the good news is that they're not gonna need these monies until several years from now. So maybe in a couple of years, we'll come to the city commission and ask for the local share of one million seventy-five. So that's, that's how the Tiger Grant looks like. Altogether, the component ones was fourteen million five twelve. And the additional component was five million three seventy-five, so that's where the nineteen million comes in. And there's a whole things of information that we can, that we can look at, how the money will be spent.
So Pete, was the Tiger Grant approved, the amendment?
It's been awarded, but it has not been executed, because there's still a, let me go back.
No, the amendment was not...
It wasn't?
But they're gonna let us use the money.
The, this particular schedule, you see on the first column under Tiger Grant Funds, the four million three hundred thousand, for instance, that was originally earmarked for the causeway. And that didn't go through. Then we said, well, we can use that, we don't wanna return this money. Let's use it for, for the airport. That didn't go through. So text that says, we don't want you to lose the money. Why don't you apply some of these funds for the transit, transit buses? And the good news, Commissioner, when they said this, is you're gonna pay only twenty percent local, we'll fund the eighty percent. So that's, that's good for us, because we're gonna need some, in the years ahead, we're gonna need some of these buses to be replaced. Now, we don't have the one million seventy-five thousand that's listed under other funds that we can at least tell, tell the text that we will commit. And this is gonna be in the future year, because we're not expected to receive the buses. It takes several years to get the buses. By that time, we will be able to earmark some of the local monies, the one million seventy-five, for, to get quite a bit of, you're talking about five million three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure. They give us four point three million, we contribute one million seventy-five. So that's, to us, it's a good deal. And we don't want to return the, some of these monies that have been already offered to us from the Tiger Grant. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a good deal for us, because that's money that we're not gonna spend from issuing a CO, for instance. It's, it's coming from a grant. And, let's see. The contractual obligations, again, this gives you an idea of how much, five million dollars. And we've gone over some of the, some of these monies have already been spent because of the reimbursement resolution versus under payments. Monies that already been spent, even though the CO proceeds have not come in yet. But the reimbursement resolution allow us to spend money from the general fund, and then the general fund gets reimbursed from the proceeds. So we're gonna get reimbursed so far. Eventually, we'll pay, spend the five million.
Now, Pete, let me ask you, sir. This was the same model that we use with the police department, where we buy a large amount of fleets, we replace it, and that we're not spending money on the maintenance itself. My question is, well, the police department assigns a vehicle to an officer. So there is no wiggle room to who damaged the vehicle, the maintenance schedule. But here, what I would like to see is, I want you to have fire, I mean, public works, because, I mean, I seen them driving around, and they really don't drive like they really care about those vehicles. So if we're spending a lot of money, sir, I'd like to see something where, I mean, if that person takes out the vehicle, they actually take care of the vehicle. And some of this heavy equipment. I mean, you have people that don't know how to operate these heavy equipments, or this machinery operating it. So, I mean, we spend a lot of money on this equipment, I mean, these caterpillars, these trucks. So, I mean, what I would like on behalf of the administration is to actually take care of these things. And I know it's hard, but, I mean, it's really on borrowed money, because it's really the taxpayer's money. So every time we spend a dollar on a car, on a truck, on a caterpillar, it's heavy equipment, it's very expensive. So, I mean...
Uh, contractual obligations, uh, again, this gives you an idea of how much, four, five million dollars. And we've gone over some of the, some of these monies has, have already been spent because of the, the reimbursement resolution, for instance, under payments, monies that already been spent, even though the CO proceeds have not come in yet, but the reimbursement resolution allow us to spend money from the general fund, and then the general fund gets reimbursed from the proceeds. So we're gonna get reimbursed so far. Eventually, we'll pay, spend the five million.
Now, Pete, let me ask you, sir. Um, this was the same model that we use with the police department, where we buy a large amount of fleets, we replace it, and that we're not spending money on the maintenance itself. My question is, well, the police department assigns the vehicle to an officer, so there is no wiggle room to who damaged the vehicle, the maintenance schedule, but here, what I would like to see is, I want you to have fire, I mean, Public Works, because, I mean, I seen them driving around, and they really don't drive like they really care about those vehicles. So if we're spending a lot of money, sir, I'd like to see something where, I mean, if that person takes out the vehicle, they actually take care of the vehicle. And some of this heavy equipment, I mean, you have people that don't know how to operate these heavy equipments or this machinery operating it. So, I mean, we spend a lot of money on this equipment, I mean, these caterpillars, these trucks, so, I mean, what I would like on behalf of the administration is to actually take care of these things. And I know it's hard, but, I mean, it's really on borrowed money, because it's really the taxpayer's money. So every time we spend a dollar on a car, on a truck, on a caterpillar, it's heavy equipment, it's very expensive, so, I mean, I would like to see something on behalf of the administration to alleviate some of that.
And I just forgot, Mr. Fisher, uh, all our, all our trucks have GPS, which talks about hard braking, hard turning, hard stuff. I do wanna reiterate, though, a lot of our equipment is eighteen years or older, so they have maintained it. I mean, I, we're, we're there, there, you're talking about, we have a caterpillar that they painted, that has been about, I don't know, how, how, like, caterpillar, flotilla? They, he, they talk about painting it, they talk about, so we are taking, in order for these machines to last eighteen, nineteen years like we have now, they are taking care of it. So, Commissioner, yeah, we're, we're right on board. I've, I've toured most of the areas, and they are, you're talking about, they have straps to hold on lights, they have these other items behind it, so, uh, you, you talk to these individuals, their vehicles, they're just running them great right now. And our, our fleet managers are looking for cleaning, and so, yes, we're, we're doing that, and we do reports now on braking, hard turning, hard stopping, hard anything like that, so we're right on that, Commissioner, cause I agree with you. Let's put the five million, but let's keep it, we do inspections on every Friday, look at their trucks, make sure they're, even their uniforms, so we're doing the best we can.
Yes, sir, we have a preemptive inspection before they begin, and help them do it.
Thank you.
It's logged in.
And again, this is the same thing, fire equipment, five million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, three ninety-one, uh, various, various departments, four hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven, six light equipment, heavy equipment, three million, eight eighty-six, six, six twenty-six, again, all for the public. And that really, that takes care of the, again, we do not want any action of this item, because we have already, uh, we had already approved it on November seventh. This is, just wanted to give you an up-to-date, some of the questions that we, that came up on the November seventh, and we hope that we answer all the questions. Again, no action on this item.
There's just consideration, there's no action needed, City Secretary?
No action needed.
I'd still like to get the, I'd still like to get the list of the streets.
Yeah, we checked with our legal department mayor, and for us, for you to, we go ahead and say, do not take any action, and we'll be okay.
Okay.
So...
Just a presentation.
Just the presentation?
This is a presentation.
Okay, that's fine. As long as we're doing everything legally. Allison, okay. Item number twelve.
Action item number twelve, consideration and action to authorize the purchase of an aerial bucket truck for the Parks Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. Uh, this item was tabled previously on October seventeenth, and so we're bringing it back to you as, uh, for consideration. Uh, the existing nineteen ninety-eight bucket truck has exceeded its operational lifespan and is insufficient to perform the necessary duties required. Often, uh, we are outsourcing assistance, uh, from PUB to reach heights that, for our own poles, the non-PUB poles, um, but we rely on, uh, PUB scheduled to do so and their generosity. Um, this truck is also, will be available for use for other city departments, uh, such as traffic. A lot of times, we like to coordinate with MIS, so that they can get to the radios. Anytime we're in a park, um, we like to work together, um, and the health department and any other one is, as needed. Uh, we use bucket trucks, uh, every week, on average, from various things, from trees to light poles, this'll help us get to our musco lights and fix, fix those. The musco lighting warranties are very, very expensive, and so we've chosen not to renew those, so that we can, uh, change those lights ourselves. Plus, they have a limitation of a twenty-five percent capacity, which twenty-five percent have to be out for us, for them to come down and change our lights, which is not very good. Um, and so, we request approval for a ward of purchase to Silsby Ford, Inc., in the amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine and twenty cents, and the funding is available from zero one five two nine four three, in which we utilized our, looked at all of our savings from the last fiscal year to see why, how I could squeeze